Please have a roll call.
Ann Brinkman is absent. Alan Buffnum?
Present.
Mark Dietrich is absent. Tracy Goldner?
Present.
Dick Matthews?
Here.
Scott Ohm?
Here.
George Pond?
Present.
And Steve Williams is absent.
All right. Thank you. We could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I move for approval of the order of the agenda.
Second? Second from Scott. Okay. Please vote.
And that motion passes 5-0.
I move for approval of the minutes of the August 4, 2011 meeting.
I'll second it.
Please vote.
And that motion passes 5-0.
Next on the agenda is the public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. And we have no one in the audience, so I'm assuming that means no one will be speaking. Next item up are the public hearings. We have three items consisting of five cases today. We will start with subitem A, case number ZOA-11-07, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Law concerning annexation of real property to the city. We have a presentation?
We do, a brief one.
Okay.
The, generally speaking, Wheat Ridge follows state statutes as it pertains to annexation of property. However, state law does allow that local jurisdictions municipalities can adopt their own regulations pertaining to annexation procedures. Our city attorney's office has recently made a recommendation that the city adopts some additional local regulations pertaining specifically to the disconnection of property from the city. Disconnection, as the name implies, is essentially the opposite of annexation. It's a process whereby a property owner or a group of property owners that are part of the city that are incorporated can essentially petition the city to disconnect or separate from the city and become unincorporated. In doing so, they could either remain unincorporated in Jefferson County, or they could choose to, if they were eligible, to annex to another jurisdiction, another municipality. Most property, once it's incorporated into the city, begins to receive some sort of benefit, some sort of municipal services really immediately upon annexation, and there becomes kind of a bond there, a mutual bond of responsibilities. Because of that fact, that they begin to receive benefits of being part of the municipality, and the city, you know, plans accordingly for that in terms of staff resources, et cetera, the city attorney's office is recommending that the city take a more conservative approach as to the process of whereby a property or a property owner or a group of property owners could initiate that process of disconnection from the city. So what the ordinance that's being proposed, that's being reviewed by the Planning Commission tonight, is essentially an ordinance that would require city council to be the first step in that disconnection process. So city council would need to essentially authorize the ability of a property or a group of property owners to disconnect from the city by adopting its own ordinance, allowing that process to move forward for a specific geographic area. It is an amendment to Chapter 26, or in addition to Chapter 26 of the municipal code, so obviously that's why it's here before you this evening at the recommendation of the city attorney's office. And that's, you know, it's a pretty straightforward ordinance in terms of, you know, the substance of it, so that's all the comments that I have, and be glad to entertain questions.
Questions for Ken?
I have one. So really what this is, this is just to put in that we're going to have the option for a disconnect, right? That's what this?
Yes. It just essentially adds another layer to the process of how a property owner or a group of property owners would initiate a disconnection from the city.
Having said that, what is, are there some other criteria then after, if this passes, that the planning staff would use? So they're, I guess, I guess I'm just wondering, like, someone just say, like, I want to create a little island of?
Right. No, it's a good question. After, with this addition, we essentially defer to the state statutes regarding disconnection. And there are certain criteria that have to be met that would essentially allow a disconnection to proceed forward, certain criteria that have to be met. Generally, they relate to the petitioners who are petitioning disconnection would need to substantiate that the city has not kind of fulfilled their end of the bargain, and has not provided some level of municipal services to the parties. That's really the first threshold that they'd have to demonstrate in order to be eligible for disconnection.
Okay. Thank you.
But we'd fully defer to the state statutes in that regard.
George?
Yeah. So then I assume that it's, the state statutes allow then for this, for a city council then to see that, and essentially they could not adopt an ordinance, or they could, they could vote down an ordinance, and the state statutes allow for some, for that process, I assume?
That's right, and particularly as a home municipality.
Excuse me. Ken, what, do you have any insight into what the city attorney's reasoning was for why, why they recommended this extra, this extra step? I mean, if, it almost seems like we're looking at, obviously, it makes, it adds, since it adds another layer to the process, it makes it harder for, say, a group of people who want to disincorporate themselves from the city to do that. Is, I mean, what's the legal reasoning behind adding that extra step, that extra sort of layer of?
Sure. Well, I think a couple of things. I mean, number one, our city attorney, Jerry Doll, you may or may not know, has been heavily involved in the state statutes as it pertains to annexation, so he's certainly very familiar with annexation procedures, and I think feels that this is just kind of the belt and suspenders approach that is good best practice. I think it's also in part motivated by the fact that we have in fact done numerous annexations in the past several years on the west side of town, and we're in the process really of making and have made investments in those properties in terms of infrastructure and infrastructure investments that we'll be making in the near future at 32nd and Youngfield as well. And I think, knowing that we're making those real capital investments, I think all the more reason that we want to make sure that additional process is in place.
So it's, in one, one way of looking at it is sort of helping to protect the city's investments in annexed or recently annexed property?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. Any other, any other questions for Ken? Okay. Call for a motion if anybody wants one, and then we can discuss if you like.
I move to recommend approval of case number ZOA-11-08. Excuse me, I'll just clarify before I continue. It's seven on our agenda, it's eight on this, on this staff report. I assume it's eight.
Yes.
I move to recommend approval of case number ZOA-11-08, excuse me, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Law concerning annexation of real property into the city.
Is there any discussion? All right, I'll ask for a vote, please.
The motion passes 5-0.
All right. Next up on the agenda will be the real case number ZOA-11-07, since we just did 08, an ordinance concerning appeals from decisions of the Director of Public Works. Tim or Ken?
I'm going to do that one, too.
Okay. Great.
And again, I'll be brief on this one. I think the genesis of this, as the Planning Commission is well aware, city council and the Planning Commission as well, over the past several years, has made a very conscious effort to ensure that our regulatory processes are flexible and really reflect an open-for-business perspective. You know, we've done numerous ordinance that I think are in that vein over the past several years. Some examples would include the fact that we've expanded the scope of administrative variances that are eligible for review and approval by the Community Development Director. We also adopted an ordinance that the Planning Commission didn't review because it wasn't an amendment to Chapter 26, but expanding the scope of items that can be appealed regarding the building code. And that was an ordinance that was adopted last year, and just broadened that scope of things that can be appealed in terms of building code requirements. The ordinance that's being introduced tonight was introduced by Councilman Reinhardt and has been to study session with city council. It essentially proposes to create an appeal process to the Board of Adjustment for administrative decisions of the Public Works Director, and specifically administrative decisions of the Public Works Director that are made after a final Planning Commission and City Council action. So during city council and Planning Commission review of things like a subdivision, for instance, I think would be the best example, an applicant or, you know, whoever's making that application for subdivision can appeal, you know, basically any of the subdivision regulations through that process. So this is essentially after the fact, the administrative application of the subdivision regulations and other things that the Public Works Director has jurisdiction for, those would now be appealable to the Board of Adjustment. The criterion for granting that relief is that the administrative requirement imposes a particular and unique hardship as opposed to a mere inconvenience. And that language really mirrors language from the Board of Adjustment in terms of variances. So, you know, I would say that this is really akin to the process that's already in place to request relief from zoning code requirements such as setbacks that go to the Board of Adjustment, or, as I already mentioned, the building code appeals relative to the building codes that we have in place. So essentially, it's really just that third leg in that, those three different regulatory environments, the zoning, the building, and the public works requirements. So that's really the spirit of the intent of this ordinance. It is an amendment to Chapter 26, obviously requiring review by you this evening, and again, be glad to answer questions.
Very good. Questions? Let's start with Dick this time.
I'm just trying to envision the actual operation of this. Would an example be when we approve a particular land use subject to submitting an acceptable drainage plan? And if the public works and applicant can't come together on that acceptable drainage plan, then that gets appealed to this board? Is that an example of what might happen?
I would perhaps defer to Tim, but I would think that's an excellent example of something that could be appealed.
And another would be to arbitrarily develop standards for, say, a street section that wasn't envisioned initially, where outside of what's done through your approvals and city council's approvals, you know, there's a lot of design information that is left kind of vague. And so if my position were to be onerous in some requirement, there'd be a way to try to rectify that.
I think I kind of understand the intent that, you know, to have people get involved and everybody kind of has a say. The first question I have is, what does the appeal process do to the project? Does it stop the project? You know, I'm just thinking of, you know, somebody appeals, does it just, does it stop, it doesn't go any further until those appeals have been heard and judged?
I think it could, depending on the scope of the appeal. If the item being appealed is kind of fundamental to whatever the development application is, for instance, you know, the whole drainage concept for the project, then, you know, I don't think we'd be in a position to grant much approval of the project to move forward until that issue had been resolved.
The second question I have is, I'm thinking, I'm thinking kind of worst case. I'm thinking of, you know, hypothetically or unhypothetically, a large project, 200-plus acres, that's west of, you know, I-70, and there's a group of people that are against the project. Could they then therefore, each one consecutively appeal, the next one comes along, they appeal, and it just drags the project out? And while the intention was good for a few individuals to have a speak, now we have potentially developers that are just livid because, you know, they're watching their property, you know, not going forward, and time is money.
No, it's a good question. I think the way it's structured, though, is that the only people withstanding to make that appeal are the people that are being, having the condition imposed upon them. So it would be only the developer, to use the generic term, that would have that appeal right.
George?
Yeah. I want to make sure I'm also understanding this clearly. So I think the example of, like, the landscape or the street section, things like that, that's, I think, pretty clear, that those could be things that are in some ways a little bit looser or gray area interpreted by the director, and then in that interpretation, a chance to appeal if they felt there was true hardship based on that interpretation. But is it also true, then, that there might be something that was kind of not really gray area, it was pretty black and white, and it had been passed through the whole process, the Planning Commission, the council, Plating is an example, and the applicant never agree, never really, had any disagreement all along with it, and then they could use, then, the director's just basically enforcing what had already been approved, they could then kind of appeal at the very, very end? Is that also how it works?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. I certainly think the intent of the ordinance is structured to basically offer an appeal from determinations that were made, you know, subsequent to those Planning Commission and Council decisions. So those decisions, in my mind, are decisions that have been made and aren't appealable through this process. It's really subsequent decisions that weren't contemplated or weren't discussed through that public hearing process. So I don't know if there's any way to clarify that. We could certainly talk about that with the city attorney's office, but to me, the legislative intent is that the decisions that Planning Commission and City Council made are final, but to the extent that there are additional, more detailed issues that come up during the administrative review, that those are the ones that are appealable through this process.
Okay. But there could be a possibility that there's some sort of lingering, you know, disagreement that kind of runs through commission and council and ends up then, you know, being appealable that maybe is outside of the intent of what this is, potentially, I don't know.
Yeah. No, again, it's a good question, and we could look into that a little more, but to me, clearly the intent is that we wouldn't be revisiting issues that have been decided upon by those higher bodies, if you will.
Any more questions? All right. Motion?
I move to recommend approval of case number ZOA-11-07, an ordinance amending code section 26-115 concerning appeals of decisions of the Director of Public Works.
Second? Discussion? All right. I'd ask for a vote.
And that motion passes 5-0.
All right. Next item is going to be, uh, three zoning code amendments. We'll start with case number ZOA-11-09, grading and fill requirements, Section 11. I'm sorry, I'm reading from the exhibits here. We'll just, let me stick to the ZOA-11-09, an ordinance concerning grading and fill permits. All right. Ken or, yes, sorry?
Should we hear all three of those cases simultaneously?
Really don't need to. I think I'd prefer to maybe give some prefacing remarks that maybe come to a couple of those, and then act on them separately.
Okay. Yeah, I think we should. They're different enough that I think we should look at them separately. So, Tim and Ken, let's look at 11-09.
What I'd like to start with is just explain that as the city attorney put together the, this ordinance, he incorporated several issues in one ordinance, which confuses the issue possibly tonight, but not to any degree. You're all smart people, you'll, you'll all be able to pick out those sections of the ordinance that apply to each of the different issues. And then, secondly, I'd like to say that the case nine and case 11, the grading and fill permits and the public improvements concerning installation in subdivisions, is here because of city council's priority that was set earlier this year, that they wanted the city staff to try to create the least restrictive environment for development as possible. And as good staff folks, we've gone in and taken a look at a lot of our different policies and procedures, and are bringing two of those items to you tonight. And the first that we'll talk about is, of course, case nine, which is the ordinance concerning grade and fill permits. As staff took a look at that particular section, Section 26, which we generally call a grading permit, we found that there's redundancy. Most of the grading permits that we're issuing today are on properties that carry a building permit as well. And so we're making a developer or a property owner come in, obtain a building permit, and then maybe simultaneously, and sometimes not, sometimes it's a secondary action, they have to obtain this grading and fill permit. So what we're proposing to you this evening is that in cases where we have a building permit, the grading and fill is covered under the building permit. The city staff, whether it's community development or public works, work hand in hand on building permits, and so we do the same review and the same administration, whether we have two pieces of paper or one. So we're not, what we're trying to do is strip that away so that they don't have to get two different permits. If they don't have a building permit requirement for their action, say they're going to overlot grade a large site, and a large site by definition in this ordinance is anything that's over an acre. And we chose the acre because that's simultaneous to, it's the same requirement we have for our stormwater management program. And so it blends there. We need to administer them if it's an acre or more, and therefore it makes sense that we make the grading permit applicable at an acre. And so you'll see that we've stripped away all of the other requirements we had that dealt with the amount of fill that was either moved or removed, and streamlined the procedure. We've also made a few changes that we felt were appropriate in just pure administration of that. And so rather than go through each of those in detail, I'd be happy to answer any questions you find in that Section 11 of the ordinance that's dealing with the new grading permit, which again, we don't believe is going to be probably applied for more than a few times a year. And so in those instances, then we'll implement this new revised ordinance if you and council recommend it.
This might take a few minutes. There's a lot of...
Yeah. If you just go to Section 11, that's really, it's really all in Section 11. You'll see the very first Section 11A is where we've streamlined it, and then you can see a little bit farther down where we've taken most of the ordinance out.
So with, one thing I've noticed is, I noticed this the other day, with these adjustments, minor excavation of fill permits, it looks like they go completely away. They're not going to be required.
Absolutely. Right.
Because your focus is on, like you're saying, that sort of parallel between stormwater, drainage, and kind of looking at drainage capacity for those larger lots along with grading, because they do go hand in hand. Obviously, the slope of the land tells the water where to go, so that makes sense. Okay.
And you see, we've eliminated some things like the fencing requirement, some of those things, we don't believe those really are important, and they could be cumbersome to a development or a property owner.
Well, and frankly, to the individual homeowner or property owner, say, of a rental property, a duplex or something, it makes, making improvements to their smaller site, you know, obviously under an acre, easier to deal with, just in terms of the, dealing with the city, the city structure and organization and going through that.
Yes, that's the intent.
Okay.
I have two small questions. Where does, where does dust mitigation fall into, I guess, permits?
Dust mitigation?
Yeah.
That's really in the stormwater, in the stormwater program.
Okay.
And so by reference, you'll see that we require them to comply with the stormwater ordinance, and the stormwater ordinance talks about dust control and tracking and off-site pollution. We do have a section in here that talks about not having any, any material come off the site.
So irregardless of the size, they'd still have to mitigate that?
They would if there is a violation. And so they don't have to get any kind of permit, but if we or, or if someone were to complain and we were to investigate, then we would cause compliance with our stormwater program.
So the questions, I am... George?
Oh, just a random question. Under subsection 3, on the bond, it's $5,000 is struck out and $20,000 is in its place. However, the text still reads $5,000.
Well, then we will fix that. It's supposed to read 20. Good, a good catch. We, that should be fixed. We, thank you. We'll make that correction.
Yes, Dick? Do we need?
Time for a motion?
Well, I was going to ask if anyone, if everyone needed more time to review the deletions and additions before we make motions? Or are we ready? Okay. Why don't, I think we're open to a motion?
I move to recommend approval of case number ZOA-11-09, an ordinance amending code section 26-623 concerning grading and fill permits with the corrections that Commissioner Pond offered.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I've got a discussion on that, that I'd like to compliment staff for really very good work, streamlining that and making it possible for people to invest in their properties, and I think that's a real step in the right direction, and obviously, I am going to support this.
I'd also just like to echo what Dick has to say regarding that. It's nice to see, nice to see that streamlining, it's nice to see things being made easier for the homeowner, the property owner, on the small scale, while still maintaining standards regarding erosion control and so forth. You know, I think all of that's very important, especially for the larger subdivision-type developments. So if there's no more discussion, we'll call for a vote.
The motion passes 5-0.
All right, next up, case number ZO8-11-10, an ordinance concerning land use document submittals.
Thank you. We've taken the opportunity in this ordinance to do a bunch of cleanup concerning the requirements that we are currently imposing relative to our survey and our GIS standards. And so by policy, we're doing, we're making requirements of development submittals, and those should be codified, and so this was an opportunity to bring those forward. You'll find those in Sections 2 through 7 and Section 9. They're more technical requirements concerning plat submittals, the survey that they have to use, and some of the survey information that they need to use in developing their plats. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have relative to any of the changes that we're suggesting at this time.
Any questions for Tim?
Just to make sure, because I, we're looking at ZO8-11-10, and I do see on the document some sections that are indicated, Section 8, 9, and 10, is that correct?
No, it's just 9, 2 through 7 and 9.
And 9, okay.
Yes. 8 and 10 I'll be talking about with the next case.
Well, if there are no questions for staff, I think we can entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of case number ZO8-11-10, an ordinance amending code section 26-111, Section 26-403, and Section 26-407 concerning land use document submittals.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
The motion passes 5-0.
All right. Excuse me. Last case in the public hearing tonight, case number ZO8-11-11. Tim?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me preface that for everyone at home. An ordinance concerning required public improvements associated with subdivisions, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, go ahead. Yes. This particular change, these changes, because there's a couple of different changes to our city code, are a result of some work that was initiated by city consellers Reinhardt and Barry. And so having worked with those two consellers, we've come to some changes that city council and study session liked, and we want to take those and show them to you. To do that, I have also provided a staff report that is marked informational, information only, and it is relevant to Section 5 of the city code, only because it deals with the same matter that we're going to talk about for a few minutes. And so what the intent of these changes, Chapter 5 and in Chapter 26, is to decrease the requirement for curb gutter and sidewalk as it exists in today's code. And so to kind of give you some basis of where we are today, anytime that there is a building permit, then there's an opportunity to review the need for public improvements, and the primary ones are curb gutter and sidewalk. That is found in Chapter 5. And then in Chapter 26, as it relates to subdivisions, we have the same requirement, that if you are going to develop a subdivision, then no matter how big, and that's kind of the issue, is no matter whether it's a two-lot subdivision or a 50-lot subdivision, you're required to build curb gutter and sidewalk. Now, in Chapter 26, it says, you know, you shall. In Chapter 5, it's at the discretion of the Public Works Director, for the most part. And the intent is, again, to make this a less restrictive environment and take a look at whether or not we really need or want, as a city, curb gutter and sidewalk on every street in town. Because that's the way the ordinance, as they exist today, would want the city to become, and that's how they're interpreted, and we believe that's why they were written the way they're written. So the intent of these changes is to have a new mindset on that, that we don't necessarily need to have sidewalks everywhere. And secondly, we probably, as a city, can't afford to have sidewalks everywhere. So we now have a requirement that if you build a house on a street, or you perform a major improvement to a property on a street, and if you, if it doesn't make any sense to put the sidewalk in, because nobody else has sidewalk on the street anywhere, then what we make you do is we make the property owner post a bond. And we hold that bond for 10 years in case the sidewalk's ever built. If it's not built in 10 years, then we refund it back to the property owner. And so, again, we've got this bureaucratic process in place to try to build sidewalks, and historically, we've found that if we don't build them when they're initially required, more than likely, they're not going to be required in the next 10 years, and we end up carrying this money in an account, keeping track of it, and then ultimately trying to find the property owner that gave us the money so that we can give it back. So that is another part of what we're doing, is getting rid of that requirement as well. The new policy that we basically would be adopting with these two ordinance changes, the one in Chapter 5 and the one in 26, would state that if you have a building permit or a minor development, and the street that that property is on or is adjacent to, because I'm trying to talk about the two different ordinances at the same time, if that street is identified in our bike and ped master plan as a pedestrian route, then we want to have a sidewalk there, because we've made a conscious decision to prioritize those streets for sidewalks, or trails, or bike paths. If you have a property that's being developed that's adjacent to an arterial or a major collector street, same thing. Our Streetscape manual speaks to making sure that we have pedestrian routes along those streets. So that's the two recent actions by you and the city council, which set up the policy concerning priorities for sidewalks. And we're carrying that now into this ordinance change, so that if we have those developments in those two instances, then the sidewalk's required. You'll also see in, let me pull it up so you can identify with it real fast. In the second page of the ordinance, under 545, Subpart D, which is in caps and reads, "The installation of curbs, gutters, and sidewalks shall only be required if such improvements are preexisting." What that paragraph says is that you basically have several levels of test. The first test is the street that we're developing adjacent to in the bike, ped master plan, or is it a arterial or a major collector? Then we go to the second test. The test is, okay, you've got, you're building a new house on this street, and we want to have curb gutter and sidewalk, but it doesn't make any sense to have you build curb gutter and sidewalk, if you're the only one in the block. And so what this says is if there's any other property within that physical block that has curb gutter and sidewalk, then you need to build it now. And then it goes on in Subpart G of that same ordinance, which is on the next page, talks about that if it's impractical or economically unfeasible, this is the section where we used to require posting the bond. Now what we're going to do is require that the developer, property owner that's building this house, that they pay to the city as a condition of approval, the estimated cost of the curb gutter and sidewalk. And then the city can take that money and build sidewalks anywhere in the city that they'd want. The intent is to use that money, put it into a special fund to have, and maybe reinstate a program that we had a while back, which was the Missing Sidewalk Link Program, where we would go out and build sections of sidewalk where there may be one property or two properties on a block that didn't have a sidewalk. So it provides some income there. And the city attorney believes that that is justifiable, and we're taking the money that would go to sidewalk in front of that house, and may go to build a sidewalk in another part of town, but it's still going for that same kind of improvement. And it eliminates the whole issue of having a bond at the city, which is going to a fund. And that's kind of the highlights. You'll see the same language that I've just talked about in Section 8 and Section 10, or Section 8, I'm sorry. Section 8's a section that talks again about subdivision, and that we aren't going to require curb gutter and sidewalk, except in those two instances, the bike, ped master plan, and the Streetscape manual. And with that, hope I didn't confuse you too much, I'll be happy to answer any questions on those two, specifically, the one that you're looking at is Section 8.
Dick?
It's not a question, but in Section 8B, there are two sentences in that section, and I actually think it would improve understanding if those were divided up into like number one and number two. So it was evident that there are two separate conditions. Back in the part in Section 1, where we are amending Section 545, that does a very good job of dividing up those two issues. But Section 8, I had to pull out my old College Harbrays book and try to diagram those sentences to figure out what was going on.
And we can certainly take a look at recrafting that. We actually did break that into two sentences, it was all one big run-on sentence initially from the city attorney, and so we've tried to make it a little easier to read, but we'll, we can work on it some more.
Yeah, and that earlier, Section 1, I thought that was a very good job of dividing the two concepts up of when the required public improvements would be waived, but back here in Section 8, it just kind of ran on.
Okay. Now, so that you understand, in Section 8, the first sentence says that if you have a subdivision and you are plating a new street, a brand-new street, you've got to put in curb gutter and sidewalk. And then number 2, then, is where we talk about if it's adjacent to one of these two kinds of routes. Now, we can change that, make that two sentences if you like.
It is two sentences, there's a period there, but it should be 1 and 2.
Or B and C, maybe?
Or B and C, yeah.
You're suggesting that the first sentence that talks about new streets be a B, and then we take the second sentence and make that a C? Okay.
Make that a C, yeah.
That's fine, we can do that.
I'm sorry for indulging myself to wordcraft from the diocese.
Oh, that's fine. We appreciate that, because, you know, we read this stuff, and then it seems to make sense to us, and, you know, the layman, you know, helps us.
Help me out with some logic here, Tim, on Section 8.
Okay.
So if you're building a, if you're building a street in a, say, a new street in an existing subdivision, you're going to have to put in curb gutter and sidewalk. That's the first sentence.
Well, you said in an existing subdivision. It'd have to be a new subdivision, because this is a requirement of a subdivision, so...
Okay.
So, for instance, the subdivision that you have or will see at 44th and Wadsworth has a new street, Vance Street, that's going to be running down through there. So that is an example where that street would have a requirement for curb gutter and sidewalk.
I guess it was the, for all subdivisions that require new streets, that was my hang-up, as opposed to saying all new subdivisions. But if we're talking about new subdivisions in terms of the chapter, section, and subsection, then that, yeah, that would solve that for me, okay.
Okay.
George?
Section 545G, just to kind of understand that a little bit more, I think I understand how it simplifies the escrow or bonding process. But if I'm, I want to make sure I'm clear on this, for instance, if someone, if a project came in and was on a, for instance, on a ped or bicycle route, so they were deemed, it was deemed necessary for the improvements to be made, but for some reason, it was impractical for it to happen at that time, you would take the money, but you wouldn't necessarily hold the money, you might use it elsewhere in the city for another sidewalk. And so I just want to make sure, since obviously, we're trying to push, put an importance on executing these routes, pedestrian or bike routes, how we wouldn't fall into a trap, perhaps, of spending that money, and then when we needed to move forward with that, you know, where are the resources to do that? Because obviously, when it's in escrow, the resources are there. When it's in this situation, it gives you flexibility to do things elsewhere, which sounds like a good idea, but at the same time, it might, it might then come back to bite us later. I'm just wondering if that was considered, and if you think that's a problem or not.
Yeah, it was considered, and we don't believe it's a problem. City council would ultimately decide where those funds would be spent. And so it would, again, be the citizens committee, the city council, that would make that decision. So it could go into building a bike ped route, or it could go to be spent to complete a ped route that we have today. You know, fill in the missing link here and there on one of the streets that are in the system today. So the intent is to spend it to complete the pedestrian system.
Dick? Something? No? Tracy? Okay. Scott? All right. Okay, well.
I move to recommend approval of case number ZOA-11-11, an ordinance amending code section 26412 concerning required public improvements associated with subdivisions, subject to the word crafting that I suggested.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to comment that I believe if the city of Wheat Ridge ever is going to become a truly pedestrian-friendly city, that we need to complete the gridwork of sidewalks. However, completing a short section of sidewalk to nowhere in the middle of a block and waiting another 40 years while the economic life of that sidewalk is well past before it connects to anything, also is not necessarily the best way to go about doing it. And the idea that you can move that money and build sidewalks, where you can fill in the missing link, I think, long-term, is a much better public policy. And I want to mention that I'm going to vote for this, not because I don't support sidewalks, because I do, but I think this is a much better way to go about skinning that cat.
Once again, I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Manathewes. As someone who moved to Wheat Ridge from Denver, specifically because there is, in some neighborhoods, a lack of sidewalks and a more rural character, that's kind of cool. And I think it's one of many defining characteristics for the city that helps, you know, to maintain in places its rural character and heritage. And while I am in full agreement with Councilman Reinhardt and Councilwoman Berry in terms of, you know, maintaining and improving pedestrian and bike routes, I think their suggestions and the way you guys have handled it on staff to go about it is great. And I think it helps to maintain that rural character at the same time. And as someone who has a sidewalk on half of his property, I totally understand the rationale behind it, too, because there's almost no reason to put a sidewalk in on the other half, because it's, there's, it's not a pedestrian route, it's not a bike route. So, well done, I think. Any more discussion?
Yeah, but eventually, those sidewalks have to be built. I'm one of those parents that always wanted to have my children walk to school, but we also drove our child to school every day, because there were not enough sidewalks linking on the route to school. So, you know, eventually, those sidewalks are going to have to go in there so that our kids can walk to school.
I remember just going along with sidewalks, that there was no sidewalks, and it was a two-way street down 44th and walking to Dale. Back in those days, and they were dirt roads, there was no highway on, you know? And it's grown a lot. And if I had my kids now, I would bust them, but you've got Tabor that has, goes to nowhere that needs no sidewalks, that you can still ride your horse down and go to the open land that doesn't, I agree. And I just wanted to agree with you that I think you guys are doing a great job that way.
Great, I'll call for a vote on the motion, please.
And that motion passes 5-0.
Once again, I'd like to thank staff for their good work on all five of these cases. We all appreciate it. Other items, we have the 38th Avenue Quarter Plan update. Do we have any updates?
Not really. We're madly crafting the draft plan at the staff level and reviewing that, and we'll have it ready for you on the 15th for public hearing.
Great.
Hey Ken, I have one question. Has there, I know in Fort Collins, there's a, they've always kind of done what's called a connectivity between the cul-de-sacs, trying to make connectivity through neighborhoods. Is that something that, because I just know, like, in my neighborhood, there's some areas where there's just not, you know, there's a, just kind of dead ends, and there's no connectivity. Is that something that is being thought of in the future?
Specifically on 38th Avenue Plan?
No, 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 not on 38th Avenue.
Just in general?
38th Avenue, I'm just, you know what I'm saying, like on a cul-de-sac, where it's just kind of dead ends, and it wouldn't take much just to put a sidewalk through to connect it to the other streets.
Right. Not specifically, but I think, as has been discussed, given the, you know, the description of this ordinance, I mean, if there are opportunities for that that are relatively low-cost, you know, this is, you know, a perfect example of how that fee could be, you know, used in smart, kind of common-sense ways to do things like that. So, you know, as we come upon opportunities like that, or if you're aware of specific opportunities, please make us aware.
Anything else? All right.
I move to adjourn. Second.
Vote. All right, thank you, everybody.